Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Nags Head Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, March 21st. First item of business will be to approve our agenda.
Can I make a motion?
Please. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Moving on to public comment, please. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to us this morning? Andy, you want to speak to us?
Kind of tradition now.
Good morning, yeah.
Hey, my name is Basil Belsham. My wife and I live at 3521 South Memorial in Nags Head. I've reviewed the materials that were provided for this meeting and looked at the updated zoning amendment map. That shows a combination of R3 and C5 zoning with that 4.7 acre lot at Hollowell and 158 to C5. It also shows the properties that back up to that lot on South Virginia, South Virginia Dare Trail is R3, as well as the east side of Memorial between Hollowell and Bainbridge. So my neighbors and I hope you will approve that version and forward it to the Board of Commissioners at a public hearing for approval. This version seems to be a good compromise of residential and commercial that will help ensure the look, feel, and nature of the historic character area. So I thank the planning board and the towns planning staff, as always, for their work on this project, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for being here for all these months. We do appreciate it.
Yes.
Anybody else want to speak to us this morning during public comment? Okay, then let's move on to the approval of our minutes for the February 21st meeting.
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes?
Please. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor.
Aye.
So we approved the minutes from February 21st as submitted. Thank you, Lily. They're always good. Moving on then to our action, our first action item, consideration of a vested right special use site plan amendment. Kelly's up.
I'll quickly pull up the site plan. Roberta thankfully told me how to make the mouse work. Hopefully it'll be a lot smoother now. Alright, so I'm here this morning to present a vested right special use permit site plan review. It's been submitted by Mike Morway of Albemarle &amp; Associates. He's here this morning on behalf of Nags Head Church. What the church is asking to do here is, I'm sure everybody's familiar with the current layout, but they would like to expand their parking lot to the rear of the church, so coming in off Soundside Road, having this new parking area and this pathway here running back to some stormwater management measures. As part of that, it might be hard to see on this plan, but there's a existing storage shed located back here. Part of this project would be relocating the shed to this location. The property's at 105 West Soundside. This is an existing religious complex, and the property is zoned R2 medium density residential. There's portions of this property that is located in a shaded X flood zone, but I'm sure y'all know we have a local elevation standard of nine. So this storage shed here exceeds the 300 square foot of maximum allowable storage below base flood. So there's some options there. They can flood proof it. They can elevate it. Mr. Morway's been in contact with Steve Semansky, our chief building inspector, on the flood issues. So should this be approved and this occurred, we'll make sure that it's flood compliant. For a 2017 comprehensive land use plan, this is within the residential district. It's also part of the historic character area. As we move through the review, you'll notice that as part of this, the work back here will involve some tree removal. Just wanted to say that the land use plan does have some language in there about preservation of natural vegetation, topography, maintaining open spaces and view sheds. So that should be taken into consideration as we, as we look at this. Table, or rather, section 6.6, Table of Uses and Activities, states that a religious complex is a special use within the R2 district. So with what they're doing here, with just the expansion of the parking lot, that elevates a site plan review to what we would call a major site plan review. We have minor and major site plan review. A minor site plan review is going to be pretty minimal, and it's, that sort of the clarifying factor between what's minor and major is an addition of lot coverage, greater than 1,000 square feet. So this does trigger that major site plan review, so that's why it's before the planning board. Also, they requested vested rights, which requires this to now become a special use request as opposed to just a permitted use. Lot coverage for this site, because it is in the R2 district, is allowed to be 30%, and it can be increased to 45% with stormwater management facilities. They do have the stormwater management on site currently, and they're proposing additional, but the proposed lot coverage is capped at 22.8, so that's compliant. There's no structures affiliated with this that would have to be regulated by height or architectural design, so they're, they're good there. There was a narrative in the packet that was pertaining to the required parking here. So required parking is based upon the number of seats in the sanctuary. The number of seats in the sanctuary actually isn't changing. If you noted in the narrative, they're just, they're requesting this additional parking to accommodate patrons of the church, and I guess Mike can expand more, but an overlap of people attending church en masse and different activities going on. Section 10.92.14.4 requires that there be a minimum of 20% of the surface area dedicated to parking and drive aisle be in a permeable surface, and they have 23.4% is proposed to be in a permeable material. So you can see that. It's this dark area here. So their drive aisle would be concrete, and then their parking areas would be permeable. With regard to landscaping, I might regret doing this, but I'm going to try to scoot down here to the actual site plan. Maybe, there we go. So it's a better view, hopefully. So with regard to buffering and landscaping, they do have to have parking and, where you have a parking lot, abut a right of way, you're supposed to have a 10-foot wide buffer in that area. So with this being the new portion, they do have proposed buffer area, their 10-foot wide buffer area here. And then they have off to the side, the number of trees, shrubs, and grasses that'll be associated with that. It's not pulled in any tighter because of this site triangle needed for the driveway, but you can, you can have some low lying shrubs and grasses and things in here, and I'm sure once they get started, if they can do that, they will. Section 10.93.3.2 speaks to the commercial transitional protective yard. And this is when you have a commercial use abutting a residential district or an area that's developed residentially. And they do have residential development directly behind the church to the west here. So they're going to have that 10-foot wide commercial transitional protective yard along this property boundary. And if we pan out further, it's, it's hard to see here, but maybe we can scroll. There it is. There's the inset. So as this property moves westward, there's also residential development on this side and, or residential zoning, rather, on this side, and development on this side. So they do have their 10-foot wide transitional protective yard proposed. Like I said, there's a lot of existing mature vegetation in here. So whether it's a combination of preserving what's already there or planting new, we'll need to ensure that that's, that that buffer yard's in place. With regard to interior parking, scoot up to this plan. They do have to provide a minimum of 10% of the parking area in a landscape area. So that minimum is going to be 2,601 square feet of vegetation. They're proposing 2,961 square feet of vegetation, so just over 11% of the site. And you can see the pockets here of vegetation proposed interior to the parking lot. And lastly, we do have that section of the code that requires you to either preserve 10% of the total lot area or plant 15% of the total lot area. And while they're providing some landscaping here where needed, they are going to be able to meet the requirements just through preservation of existing landscaping here. They are proposing some new lighting. We reviewed that, and it does meet the standards of Article 10 of the UDO in terms of the type of fixture, the brightness of the LEDs and the foot candles that have been shown. So we'll do a light audit on that once it's installed. And no additional signage has been proposed at this time. The Dare County Health Department did review and approve the proposal as it's shown on the screen, and our town engineer reviewed both traffic circulation and stormwater management, and has issued approval there as well. Fire department looked at this. They had no concerns. But as always, it's going to have to meet the fire prevention code, and our Public Works Director at Tech Review had a comment about the dumpster location. They revised that. You can see the 10 by 10 dumpster pad here. So it's, it's going to be perfect for front load, which is what we're trying to do, so. It is compliant from the public services perspective as well. I need to change my heading in the staff report from Public Works to Public Services. So based on this, staff does find that the proposal is consistent with the use and development standards, as well as the land use policy, again noting that the land use plan puts a, an emphasis on preservation of vegetation as much as possible. So we would just ask that, you keep that into consideration as you're looking at this. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Like I said, Mike's here. If you have any questions for him.
I have, I have a question about the lighting.
Yes.
How, can you go into detail about the lighting of that area particularly as it might spill over to the neighboring yards and stuff?
If you want to address it, you can, and I'll fill up our.
Can we, it's fine. Before we let Kelly go, I mean, some of these questions are probably going to be for both, but it's fine, Mike. Please step up. I just was going to ask quickly about the setback requirements for the storage shed. Also from the residential.
So a storage shed that is just simply storage with no habitable space included, it just has to be five feet from any side or rear setback.
That's right up against somebody's property, you know, residential property, basically.
Yeah.
And there's two storage sheds currently. There's actually like a temporary storage shed or something. So I don't know, but anyway, I don't know who to talk to about these different things, but, so it's five feet is all.
Correct. As long as there's no habitable space, and there's none proposed.
Kelly, just a quick question. You mentioned earlier on in your discussion about the transitional buffer yard on the west side of this. I was just curious about, you, you mentioned commercial, and I'm thinking, when you were talking about this buffer yard between commercial and residential, and I'm like, well, how, how are you looking at the church? Are you looking at this like a commercial building? Or is it, or are you looking at it more like, you know, I don't know. I'm just curious about how you're looking at this.
Sure. So churches would be considered commercial.
Okay.
But the, the buffer yard is just based upon things like high intensity uses or certain types of commercial uses. I guess that answers your question. I hope it does.
It does.
But anytime there's a, any type of commercial use that's generating traffic, things of that nature, adjacent to a residential, that buffer yard kicks in.
Okay. Yes. Kelly, I think we're, I mean, we're flexible. We can go back and forth, right?
Yeah, yeah. And I can pull up the lighting. You can zoom in and out right here if you need to. Try to work it up.
Good morning. I'm Mike Morway with Albemarle &amp; Associates, and I appreciate the time to present this with you today. On the lighting, currently they have the colonial style poles, which the original plan for, the original plan, the church has been there a while, but in 2005, we worked with them when they got, when they built this new structure and then tore down the other one. At that point, the colonial was a popular option in something like this. They haven't held up very well in general. I'm not just.
They have or they have not? I'm sorry.
They, they have not. I mean, those poles are all kind of leaning somewhat and paint's peeling off. And in general, they just require higher maintenance. They don't do a good job. They do a great job for lighting up paths and small parking lots, but because of their limited height, they really don't do that great of a job throwing, throwing out light over a wider area. So what they would like to do is replace it with the decorative shoebox light, the Dominion. They're on the Dominion plan. And those do have a higher pole. They do throw out light over a wider area, so you get a better distribution, not little pockets of bright and dark. What we have here is, is compliant with the towns code, not exceeding three foot. I don't think we really exceed two and a half foot candles anywhere on the site. It is similar. We did the Advent Center a few years ago, a few years back now, and the lighting level's going to be very similar to that. And it, I mean, it gives you a good level of light where you can kind of see what's going on, but it's really not very bright. We'll keep in the fixtures at the 3,000, which the code's adopted in the, in the core color temperature. And we have reduced, we're not as dense with the light poles on the west side of the site where we have the residential, and the closest poles almost 100 foot from the property line. And our light levels along the property line are below, I mean, they're virtually non-detectable.
Because most, I mean, the services are during the day, correct? So they shouldn't, I mean, the lights are just going to be on.
Correct. I mean, I'm not sure if, if seasonally, they, you know, I mean, Christmas time, a lot of times there's an evening mass on Christmas Eve. I'm not saying they don't have anything at night, but.
Well, they have some activity.
And they're, they can turn them on and off, like, well, you can turn them on when you're using them and off when you're not.
Yeah.
How tall are the poles going to be? First question. Second part is where will they, where are the current poles located now? And where will they be located with this expansion?
The poles are going to be 30-foot poles.
30 foot?
Yes, yes. The town light height limitation is 35, so we're still below that. But in order for those poles to really be that effective, they need to be up higher because they're spreading out over a longer, longer distance. And also, there's a, the, the town has a requirement now that they not be any brighter than what's the equivalent of 150 watt. I think it's around 10,000 lumens. So you're really very limited. I mean, typically, we'll be putting 250 watt equivalent lights on a larger parking lot, so. The locations are going to be pretty much right where they are now, but we are adding a couple in, in some of the dead zones.
Could, could you shrink back to, to what Kelly had before showing where that addition is going to be put in relation to the other properties, the residential properties?
Okay. This right here is the existing parking lot on the west side, and that's the portion that is being added. So we've got one light there and a double set of lights here, and then another double down here. Those are the closest ones to that property. So we're at point four, right on the property line, and we're down to point one, a few feet into the property line. And I believe a half a foot candle is the limit on the property line for cutoff fixtures. They are cutoff, fully cutoff fixtures.
And then so no, no lights on the access, the accessway, if you will, to the retention pond for stormwater?
No, nothing back there.
How about back behind the properties there that run along?
Soundside.
Those are the properties on Soundside Road.
Those are properties, and the lights are going to be right on the line?
No, no. The lights are going to be at the, the lights are going to be right where the lights are now.
Okay.
They're just going to be different lights.
Okay. So we're not adding more lights back, back behind?
Right behind somebody's house.
Behind the houses that run parallel to the road.
Right now, there is one light right here. We're replacing that with a double. There's another one that falls right here that we're removing for the driveway and putting one there. And there is one here that we are relocate, or taking out and putting in another double right there.
Double lights there.
But there's nothing, right, there's no lights here now. There's nothing going to be any closer.
Continue to come down and then go to the left where that comes behind the building and goes behind the lots? Are there any more lights?
I can do it.
I don't think we even have that on this plan because we're not doing anything on the lighting for.
Yeah, Kelly, if you can take us back to where you were when you were talking.
So here's the western property line, and then here is where it starts to go back.
That's what I'm talking about. Are there going to be any lights back in there?
He said no.
None, no. Okay.
So, Andy, we can look at it. Yeah, no lights, no lights proposed along this quarter.
Okay. Then the second part of my question is what, is, is the transition buffering all going to be natural vegetation, shrubs, things like that?
Yes.
We're not talking about, you know, high fences or whatever?
No, no. We're going to, we're going to preserve everything we can in the way of any existing trees in that, in that. But then where we're needing to supplement it with, with the town standards, we'll be, we'll be filling that in.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
You mentioned that you're moving one light pole for the driveway. Can you expand, expound on the driveway situation? The driveway's getting moved?
Well, there isn't a driveway. I mean, there's no parking back here, so there's no driveway. But in order to access the new, new set of stalls there, we've got access through here and then down through here.
So you're leaving the existing, it's actually the exit?
Yes.
It's the exit to the exist, for what, to what will be the whole parking lot? It's the exit to the existing parking lot, and it's going to remain the exit?
Yes. We're not adding any, any, anything, any new driveways. That's the existing driveway. The one comment that the town engineer had was we had a tighter radius here. the town engineer had was we had a tighter radius here and he suggested putting in a wider radius to allow more accessibility there, which we were able to accommodate.
Can you speak to the, the need for the parking again? I think I read that it was because of over, basically for overlap? Cause it's a big increase. It's a fifty percent increase in the amount of parking.
Um, it's, it's, it's more about a third. They have ninety-seven spots right there and I believe we wound up with a hundred and thirty-two now.
Oh.
So, um, they, um, they have two masses in the morning and, and the church is pretty active in promoting community events and, and, you know, just community engagement beyond the service itself. And up the whole front of the building here is basically a big lobby with a coffee station and, I mean, it's, it's pretty, pretty conducive to gathering. So I think what they're seeing is that they find people lingering after the last mass uh, for longer than you would expect and then, I mean, longer you would expect of just a church. And then people coming in for the second mass earlier and you get a, you get a big overlap there between your congregation number of people there um, that are split between two masses, but on the site at the same time. And I also believe that they, um, people were following back, they were starting to park on Soundside Road.
Oh, yeah, they always have.
And, uh, obviously not just the church. I mean, you, you have, you have the separate issue of the, of the beach, but.
Well, there's no parking allowed on Soundside Road anymore, so.
And the church got, yeah. So, I mean, they're just trying to accommodate the, you know, the crowds they're seeing.
Mm-hmm. Um, cause, cause I have a real concern with the, with traffic. I mean, there's already a problem with traffic, you know, with, with the current parking and as you're referring to with people coming and going um, at the same time, if you will, or the overlap, whatever you wanna call it. So I'm wondering if there's any, any consideration of, I know that the town engineer, I guess, approves that the traffic flow within the site plan. But what about the traffic flow and maybe, maybe this is more for Kelly or what about the traffic flow coming on and off the bypass and, and piling up on Soundside Road? Cause that already exists with, with the current, um, parking. And you're absolutely right. There is a lot of activity there. There's a, activity encouraged all week long and in the evenings. And there's people, not just in the ni- in the nice lobby that you referred to, but in the parking lot, in the yard area, in the front of the church, there's fire pits and so there is, there's things going on there all the time and it's right there by the bypass. There's parking in between, you know, but then also right there on Soundside Road. So I don't, I don't know if there's been any discussion or consideration of the, of the traffic flow outside of the parking lot. I mean, to and from the facility.
I, I'm not, certainly not aware of that.
Right.
That's already a really tough intersection before this, with that significant increase. It's definitely something you should think about.
Right, it's.
But it sounds like they're there anyways. Look, I mean, whether we allow this or not, there are gonna be same amount of people coming and going.
Well, I don't know. I, I, you know, I, I'm not sure about that, you know? I mean, we don't really know. Once the parking's there, you know, if, if you build it, they will come, you know, does it allow for more activities and more, whi- which is, which is fine. We're not here to decide that, but I think that we should consider the traffic implications. I mean, it was interesting because we had, you know, we had this information and then just this Sunday morning, I mean, there's people piled up in the turn lane in both directions sometimes trying, because again, because people are coming, you know, let's face it, the majority of them are coming for a certain service time. So you get a lot of concentration right before and after the services. So people are literally piled up in the turn lane trying to, waiting their turn to turn onto Soundside Road. And then the entrance to the parking lot is the first driveway. And there's not too much space between the bypass and that entrance. So then you've got people, you know, you've got traffic. So where, creates a situation where you can't turn off the bypass safely or at all. You've got people.
It seems to me, and you have a very valid concern, but it seems to me that if you increase the parking capacity, then you're gonna be able to get people in and park and try to unclog that, that entrance into the church parking lot, wouldn't it?
Okay, so this, and this, this is exactly what, what I'm wondering about with this. If, if the church is gonna do exactly what it's doing, exactly the same kind of programs that were going on and they need to increase their parking by more than thirty percent, that's an interesting expenditure of, of, of church access resources for no change. So is there more programming going on? It doesn't really have anything to do with what we're doing here other than what we're looking at. I'm assuming because of this change in parking, that there's gonna be more going on. So if there's more going on and you can't herd people, we all know that, to say you gotta be here early in order to get a seat and so that you can park and then we'll tag out and we'll, that would be a level of organization that none of us can, 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 can see. The fact that you cannot mandate at this intersection, right tone, turn only out, you have left and right turns going on, the fact that it's a little bit blind
It's very blind.
Looking north um, and south because of the angle, um, let's assume we have a certain population of churchgoers with, um, different sightlines. So do we need, do we need a light? Do we need, do we need a police officer, et cetera? Yeah.
Yeah, maybe so. Maybe so, but, but is that the scope of our concerns, consideration here?
Um, well, this.
Well, no, but I think, we have to think about the impact.
We, we, I, I'm, I'm winding back to the hotel and, you know.
Yeah.
What we need to, what I'm trying to do is push on those that are making decisions, that we're, we're acting on safety considerations that are more than twenty years old with a level of, with twenty years ago traffic looking at an increase of use. How could anything go wrong? It's gonna go wrong.
So, remember Kitty Hawk Kites? Um, I think it was beyond us, but one of the big things was putting in that sidewalk because we could see the impact of the decision to have something right there would cause that. It was kind of outside of our, but it made sense to put a sidewalk there to make it safer for people. So maybe there's already a sidewalk there, but in terms of thinking of the scope of the impact of saying add over a third in the parking, it has to have some sort of impact, so we should be thinking about that.
Well, I, I agree. I think the church really needs to be thinking about that for the safety of, of everyone in their, in their, in their church. Many times back, you know, when, when I lived in Manassas Sundays, a lot of times there were police officers that were in the road blocking traffic to let people come out of the church parking lot and make, keep it safe. But the church always paid for that and they always provided for a share for somebody to be doing that.
And that would be in a, in a town vehicle on their time off.
Yes.
Blocking the road.
Yes.
So there's a little bit of skin in the game back and forth, the town, that's.
Well, yeah, I mean, there are, it's, cause safety concerns are paramount and, and access to people that live down Soundside is very important, but at the same time too, this to me, without assuming that the church has gotta be ramping up activities, this at least in, in my limited understanding alleviates some of that congestion of trying to get in and get out of that parking lot.
Well, considering that the entrance is the first driveway when you come off the highway, so before, before anybody, you know, if the first bunch of people park closest to the, where they pull in and you, this new parking is all the way around in the back, so yeah, it, theoretically, if you have people that are guiding everyone and sometimes there are volunteers there in the summer.
Yeah.
Occasionally, I see some, cause they're always trying to wave me into the church parking lot when I'm trying to go home. Which is fun, you know, they are trying to expedite, but, you know, they're volunteers and they're, you know, they're not experts and, and this, you know, if this is, I, I guess, you know, I take them at their word that it's being done to alleviate the situation, but, you know, there's unintended consequences too, you know? And it's also a big issue, at least not just when they're entering, it's when they're leaving. So then you have people stacked up trying to, either that or they're going, they're speeding down Soundside Road and around the corner and out deering even worse, they don't have speed bumps and they're coming through the residential neighborhood, um, because they don't, they can't get out of the parking lot because there's cars stacked up waiting to make a dangerous turn on a, you know, on a blind um, entrance to the highway. And so, you know, it's already an issue. It really is. And I'm just concerned that expansion's gonna make it that much worse.
And s- and I'm looking at their schedule as it exists now for the summer and there is, there's a fair amount of movement at rush hour, what, what we would consider the highest volume times of traffic movement. And it's during the week, not just on weekends. Mostly days of the week being Sunday through Friday, less on Friday, nothing on Saturday. So it's a little bit different than what I would have thought for a church, for traffic flow. And it's going to be when there's a lot of movement. Consider now mulligans across the road. What time is lunch served? It's during, it's served during a service.
Well, and there's also a lot of traffic going to the, Jockeys Ridge, to the sound ac- you know, to the sound access.
Ex- as well. And, and those are just, those are.
So there's a lot of people on the street.
Adjacent. It's an adjacent concern and, and, and I, I certainly agree with what you're saying, but I'm, I'm, I'm running away from here in a minute, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna get my, my last meat on the table. Um, there certainly is a concern, but what I'm saying is, I'm, I, I'm looking at, this needs to be pushed not anywhere other than to say when the hotel was brought in a while ago and this, my concern is that we are acting as if nothing has changed. We have, we have just walked away from our, our peak two summers ever and after those peak two summers ever, we're now going to take thirty-five to percent more parking in this area. How, you know, at Soundside, and Soundside has its own concerns with the traffic volume because of a park access that is charged. This is an area of concern. And will overflow traffic move around through Soundside, south to the light of the post office? And that could be another set of problems, moving through a very residential area with qua- with, with where quiet is, I'm sure one of their selling points.
Yeah, it does already. A lot of people go out that way. I don't have an exact measurement. It's anecdotal.
Quite simply, it is what I would do. It was what, i- if I saw, if I looked out there and I looked left and right, I would choose the paths less traveled.
Right.
And the path with the light on.
And then I would go quickly.
Right.
To get out because I'm, I'm trying to get home.
So moving through the area and then moving back towards the, the access on the Soundside and the rest of the issues back there. So what I'm s- the, we're just creating, there is heat here, there's a ma- a certain amount of heat here. We're gonna create more pressure on it and, and we might get burned and I'm not sure what the way out is, but the, but, but it, we definitely need to accommodate some of this, anyway.
Well, let me ask you this question. Let's say for some reason, the church decided not to do this. And just said, you know what, we're not, we're not gonna add thirty per- thirty-five percent more parking. Then what?
Park on the road. They already do. Some of them, but.
Then, then what?
Well, that's what we're saying. They're already doing it.
Yeah, well, it, what, what.
There's not enough. There's not, you know, fifty parking spaces on the side of the road and they're not le- they're not legally doing it, so, but I mean, they do that on the other side of Soundside Road.
But you're legal.
They park in the right way, you know, so.
I, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is traffic movement in the town is enough a concern as it is and I, while, while I'm not, while I'm not saying I, there's a so- that no is a solution, what I'm saying is that, that there needs to, this is, safety is an issue. If somebody ran across the bypass in this area, wow.
Well, there's kids out, you know, so you have people coming off the highway. They're joining pretty quickly. They're trying, and, and there's kids and there's, you know, it's families. It's, and there's activities. There's people crossing over. I mean, I see them all the time. They're in the yard. They're in the, they're in the parking lot, the existing parking lot on the east side. Um, in the front of the church. You know, maybe their parents are inside having a cup of coffee. They're running around outside.
Just waiting for the hotel goes in.
So, I mean, yeah, so I mean, exactly. So I just think, I agree. I mean, there, this is not grounds to say this is not work or no, you know, but I think it should be considered.
Well, I think one of the things that we're focusing in on, on the safety issues are things that that could be conveyed to the church elders and saying, um, you, you need to give some consideration to better policing of, of traffic flow and, and maybe have, you know, the security out there that you need, you know, to handle this kind of congestion.
In the, in the past, that has happened. There's been outreach to the, you know, to the leadership of the church regarding people speeding down out through the neighborhoods to get out because there's, you know, log jam trying to leave.
Right.
And it was, you know, I, I, nothing changed that I could see. I mean, you can't force people to, once they leave the church, they're gonna do what they're gonna do, you know? I mean, I think, I hope, I like to think they may be encouraged people to, to sit in the parking lot for fifteen or twenty minutes and wait until they could get out on the road and then go up to the highway where it's dangerous to pull out because it's a blind pullout and it, you know, it's tricky. So I, you know, I probably would do what a lot of them are doing, which is go out, you know, it is what it is. And so we basically were imploring them to, you know, could you ask folks not to speed or to be aware that it's neighbor's Sunday morning too and, and, um,
Yeah.
You know, so.
I have a couple of questions. Is there a mechanism or is there a way, and this might be more for Kelly, is there a way that we can, like with Kitty Hawk Kites, I can't remember what initiated that, but is there a way if we were to approve this or recommend approval, could we put a note in there that is, I know the stoplight is more an NC DOT issue, but where we could start that ball rolling or where we can ask with the addition of thirty-five percent parking, we're uncomfortable recommending that without knowing that there's a plan in place.
For at least consideration.
Yeah, something, cause I just, if someone does get in a bag, I do think I'll look back at it and be like, oh, man, I wish I'd, you know, especially when we're concerned about it, but I don't know how that works, what we can do.
It's a good, there's probably a couple of avenues. First off, I'm thinking, um, this is all gonna be captured in Lily's minutes, which hopefully the board reads. However, if they don't, um, we're happy to put this as part of the staff report that moves forward to the Board of Commissioners, that there was significant conversation at the planning board level about traffic impacts. Um, there was a traffic study done here several years ago. At that time, it didn't trigger the need for a light, but it doesn't mean that conditions haven't changed and it may not now. So I think there's gonna be the minutes, there's going to be the staff report that the board will certainly read and be aware of. And then perhaps there's something we can do as a staff where our town engineer can maybe kick this conversation off with NCDOT and collaborate that way. But we'll, we'll make sure that this concern is, um.
Is there a mechanism to, for lack of a better, to compel people, I don't wanna say to, to do something about safety? You know, Mead was referring to ha- regularly seeing police at large, you know, religious services. You know, what, what, is there a threshold for that? It, where you say, you know, this is happening enough every Sunday for six months a year, five, whatever it is, that you, that something has to be done other than a volunteer might show up in a penny?
Right, right.
Is there a trigger?
Um, I'm not a, I'm not aware of a trigger per se, but I think that just this conversation alone is going to instigate additional conversations on the staff level, on the board level.
How do we get another, NC DOT, you said, did a study a couple of years ago. How do we get them to do that again? Cause there's more factors to consider.
Someone has to volunteer to get run over up there. That's not funny. That's not funny. I'm sorry. I mean, it's hard, I think.
But you think about Jockeys Ridge Park, over the last two years, that's become a whole different animal. Um, I ju- I just feel like the subdivision, the addition going in there, granted, I know they have.
That's gonna complicate traffic too.
Yeah, and I know they have their own accesses, but at the same time, that was something where the board really listened to the neighborhood concerns of this is going to add people zipping through.
Well, and it's gonna complicate further people pulling out of Soundside Road because you're gonna have people using both, both ends of coastal villas when it, you know.
And I worry about. Well, I think Soundside residents would have the same argument to say, this is gonna impact us. You're adding thirty-five percent parking. That's more people zipping through my neighborhood and the board listened when they were concerned about that with the others, so maybe.
So I, I mean, I think, I think you get it. I think we've kinda covered it. I'm not trying to, you know, it, obviously, we can't or wouldn't, I wouldn't say no to this over it, but I think it's worth thinking about. I do have one other thing regarding the, if, if everybody's done about this and move on, regarding the stormwater retention and the location of that, is that why is it down that, can you speak about who decided and why to put it there? Well down, you know, from the site?
It's just the space that's available. I mean, we could either, right now you have the retention area. That's where the new parking is being proposed. There's a, there's a ditch that runs through and there's a retention area there. It, I don't think we really wanna see parking going down here and leave retention there and then we. Then we would still need more retention down here for the new parking, so, um.
And what's that surface gonna be going, leading down? 'Cause it goes, actually goes down past the retention, right? The, the graded area?
What we're proposing here is to pave it to this point. Um, we've got, the way the drainage plant is working. Find the grading plan here. So, we've got permeable pavers here and here, that I think are going to take a very large load off of what's gonna go to a retention area. That being said, we still need to meet DEQ's requirements and the town's requirements. And that requires a certain amount of available volume in the stormwater basin. So, we are picking up overflow from two catch basins here and here, and bringing it across. Because we're, we start off at a, at a low elevation, but I think if we, um, in, in order to get stormwater to move from here to here, I would really have preferred this be higher. So, we're, we're, we're running fairly flat here, which is very good for pavers. I mean, that, that's what they wanna see, and that's why I don't think we're gonna see all that much getting down here. But, um, this pipe that we need to get down there with, we need to be able to, I, I don't want that pipe with a sand access above it, because I, I see this primarily being, um, equipment going in and out to the shed. Uh, I don't know if there, you know, this, this basin here, I think is gonna be a fairly usable open space. I've kept that, we're only talking, this basin is only a foot deep, because I wanna keep it as high above groundwater as we can possibly get it. Um, and the bottom of the basin is proposed at a four, the one that they have in place is a four. And generally, from everything I've seen, if it's not a rainy time of year, it's, it's pretty usable space there, so, you know.
When you say usable space, you mean?
I mean, it-
Mike, what's the, what's the hydrology like in this general area? I mean, are we, what's the, relative to groundwater, how close is the groundwater to the sur- I mean, to the surface? Because that's gonna dictate, I guess, the size of your ponds and things like that, so.
We, we can, we can make an infiltration basin a foot above groundwater and soles like this. But, I think that, that's, that's gonna let, lend it to be, see, see a higher groundwater mounding and just be a little bit more soft, whereas, you know, keeping eighteen to twenty-four inches. Um, you know, it's a nice grassed area that you can maintain, it's not, I've seen a lot of infiltration basins over the years stop getting mowed, because they're a little soft, and once they stop getting mowed, they just, they, you know, they really look bad. Um, and we don't want that to happen, we want this to be a nice maintainable area. So, so that's why we paved it to this point, to get over the pipe and not risk damage to the pipe. But then beyond that, we're just grading a, a, you know, a maintenance perimeter around it. It's just gonna be a, a soil, a soil access.
Did I see something about walking trails or something too? Is it on here or?
We don't have anything about that, but in, in, in any discussion, I mean, the church has got four point four acres back here that they purchased.
Right, I'm aware, that's, and that's kind of what-
And they don't have any, everything I've sat in on, they don't really have any kind of plans for it. Um, they talked to, you know, even when we talked about where the shed goes, you know, there was some desire to put it back here, but they don't want it back there, 'cause they can't really keep it as good of an eye on it. Um, but the only thing I've ever really heard is, is, is a desire to, you know, create a, 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 a walking trail back through there that, um, that they would be able to just offer as something for their, for their parishioners.
Um, this question might be more for Kelly, I guess, or for, so the, what happens if this wasn't a church at some point? I mean, do, how would this, I mean, I'm just, just kind of a curiosity, I guess. It's not, again, not what we're deciding today, but, or maybe Mike knows too, I don't know, you know, I mean. If it was a shop. Like, if the, if this church got too big and had to move on and it became a shop? Or whatever, yeah, closed for whatever reason, then what zoning, what regulations would kick in? What would, you know, what could become of this facility? I don't, I'm not expecting this, obviously, but, you know.
But it's a very easy answer. So, this is R two.
Right.
It's not a C two, C one, any of that. So, religious complexes are permitted use in the C two, other than, I mean, in the R two, rather. Um, there's no, to my knowledge, there's no other significant commercial uses other than single-family, two-family, duplex, you know, kinda your standard things for R two. So, it's very unlikely that a, a commercial use is going to come in and repurpose this area.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else, questions for Mr. Morway or staff? Okay, thank you, very much.
Thank you.
All right, so what are we thinking? Me and I, personally, it's, you know, it's compliant, it's, I think-
Evidently, yes.
I would like to make, you know, I personally feel strongly about the traffic implications and those sorts of things, um. And of course, always preserving vegetation, tree removal on the, you know, on the area going back to, there's a lot of live oaks in there, going back to the, um, retention pond and all of that. You know, I'd like to see us try to preserve as much as we can and do as much naturally. That, that always goes without saying, I don't, I don't know if it always happens, but, um, so that's where I stand. I think, you know, it's compliant.
I have same concerns about the traffic and the impact. I hate to not write a blank check, but do something that, we already have a lot of other issues in that area that have been compounded over the last couple of years, so I think it would be a great idea to revisit that. A stoplight would definitely help a lot. Um, and then I also, the retention, when you talked about keeping it a foot deep, I just, I understand thinking, the thinking that water won't really make it back there anyway, but I worry about neighbor's septic systems nearby. If the water does make it back there and there isn't enough to hold it, I worry about neighbor's septic systems being underwater too. But if David Ryan's okay with it, um, I feel like he would have thought about that too.
Good point, that's a good point.
But that is, I mean, I know the plan, that the water won't make it back there, but I feel like the water will.
The water will make it back there eventually, sometime, well, let's hope not anytime soon.
Yeah, and I understand being able to maintain it and stuff, but a lot of people have deeper retention ponds and we know just to mow them when it's dry, and we don't try to mow them when it's wet, so.
Right.
It is maintainable.
That's when, and when they're wet is when it's gonna be a problem.
I would think the church would be, it, they would be pretty good about maintaining it.
Well, especially if we're talking about usable space or whatever, that means someplace for the congregants to enjoy, then it sounds like they have sort of a dual, maybe a dual purpose in mind.
I don't know.
So, anyway.
It's only a foot deep.
Right. Well.
It's got a bottom of about four and a top of five. And that blends in with the grace factor, they're generally about a five, four and a half, or a five and a half. And, uh, so it's, it's, it's not gonna be like a, it's not gonna be a big hole there anyway.
No, and hopefully it won't turn into a swimming hole. But, I mean.
Well, the other thing, when we talk, you mentioned, they don't have any plans, but the walking trail and stuff, of course, if they did anything with lighting or anything like that, they would have to come back and talk about that, because the neighbors' properties are so close to that and whatnot.
Right, both on Soundside and South, and South Ridge backs up to this, so, I mean, there's a lot of people affected. Okay.
Have, have any of the neighbors been contacted?
No.
I, 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 I don't know if they've had a discussion with, with, with neighbors at all.
I haven't talked to anyone who has heard from anyone, but that wouldn't be, you know, required, but might be nice. Kelly?
So, actually, because this is a vested right, it elevates it to a special use, which means we do have to go through the paper notification, posting the sign.
But it hasn't happened yet.
No, but it will.
Okay.
So, that'll just-
Okay, yeah, okay.
My thinking is that, I, I would say yes for this as well, with the same concerns that we've all shared, so I won't go in any further.
Sounds like, look at us, all agreeing. Molly, anything?
The same, I have concerns, but.
Okay. Anybody on this end? Everybody good?
I, I, I like this, I support it, I mean, I think the traffic study is absolutely for one fifty-eight for the, for the signal, but I, I actually, I like this. They're, they're putting in parking in excess of what they need. And so, in, in my mind, this is a, this is a good thing, this is the kinda thing, I think, granted, stormwater's gonna be taken care of, but I think this, I mean, if they're adding something to the building, if they're adding square footage, they're making something bigger, well, then, then this conversation about, you know, traffic and all, all, you know, all the rest is probably important, but that's not what they're doing. I mean, it looks to me like they're, all, the only thing they're doing is trying to get the cars off Soundside Road right of way and put them on their property. And therefore, I wholeheartedly support this one, I think this is a great, uh, this is a good proposal.
Thanks.
As long as the engineers and everybody else approves it.
Right. Okay, thank you. All right, so does anybody wanna make a motion?
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve as submitted with, you've got it.
With recommendations to-
Or cabot, whatever you wanna call it, I don't, you know. Um, any, se- in a second?
I'll second it.
In a second, okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving on then to the, um, consideration of a zoning map amendment as it pertains to the historic character area. Thank you, Mr. Morway.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so, um, the, the text amendments and, uh, the proposed text amendments and map amendments that the Planning Board recommended with regard to the historic character area back at their January meeting. Staff took that to the Board of Commissioners at their March first meeting. And I, I have a feeling everybody's aware of this, but I'll say it for the sake of saying it. Um, at their March first meeting, the VOC was very gracious for everything that the Planning Board had done, the time they had put into it, noted that it was a lot of work over a very short period of time, and they were complimentary, um, of both the work that had gone into the text and map amendments. Um, there was a lot of public comment, and, um, from that public comment, there were several revisions to the text that the board wanted to see. So, they, um, we went through those, and they had asked that staff bring that back to their March mid-month meeting, which was March fifteenth. I think a lot of that was driven on, um, the one hundred and fifty day moratorium was soon to expire, so they wanted to get that back in front of them. Um, so we brought it back to their March fifteenth meeting, and, um, they did adopt those text amendments unanimously. I included the adopted version in your packet. Um, you had seen it previously, but I wanted to make sure that you had it in front of you again. I will not spend a lot of time on it, um, but just to go through quickly, there was some new language adopted into the non-conforming use section, just to ensure that a non-conforming use, um, could be rebuilt to the same degree, same non-conformities that it had, um, when it was destroyed or, or went away. Um, there was some deletion of language, um, that was pertaining to the whole, um, you can only spend fifty percent of the assessed value every twelve months. Um, we eliminated that, so if you have a non-conforming use, you're gonna be able to repair it, put it back regardless of cost or time. Um, the next significant change that was made, um, was they wanted to see some uses added back into the C five. And so, that was gonna be shopping center, group development, mixed use, um, gas station, and that might have been it. Um, so for gas station, what we did-
Convenience? Pardon? And convenience store, right, did you say convenience store?
Yeah, yeah, right, convenience stores, I was thinking there was five.
Yeah.
Um, and convenience store. And so, those got added back into, um, this table, section six point six. Uh, we put some parameters around gas stations, so they're not gonna be able to have frontage on twelve, they're not gonna be able to exceed, uh, uh, thirty-five hundred square foot habitable space limit, and they can't have more than four dispensers. So, that takes care of what are, takes care of what's currently in town. Um, that made no one who's currently here non-conforming, um, but it may make it a little less appealing for the larger gas stations that we're starting to see.
Let me, let me, did I understand you to say that then, with these, with these amendments, the changes that we've made, the amendments, then no current business there would be non-conforming in those areas affected, in the new C five?
Um, so, shopping centers, I, I anticipated this question, so, let me, it wasn't included in your materials today. Um, but when I sent you guys the, um, I guess it was back before the March fifteenth meeting, where we resent all this information out. Um, gas stations are now, previously those were considered non-conforming uses, so that's now going to be permitted by special use. Um, brew-through, that's going to be permitted by, um, permitted by right as a convenience store. Um, Kitty Hawk Kites, so, shopping centers were allowed back in as a special use. However, Kitty Hawk Kites has more than just a used non-conformity. Um, they're over that ten thousand square foot habitable space limit, they're probably over lot coverage, there's several other scenarios there, so I, I don't, I'm not comfortable saying yes, Kitty Hawk Kites is good to go. There's other non-conformities there that are going to affect it. Um, but, it's now a permitted use by special use, and should it go away, we can use that non-conforming language to let them put it back in the exact degree of non-conformity that it was.
That's the only one?
Um, no, there's probably, the same's gonna apply for Surfside Plaza. Um, that's a group development, it's now permitted by, um, special use permit. Their largest structure there is over ten thousand square feet, it's close to thirteen, so they, they're kind of in the same scenario as Jockeys Ridge Crossing. Um, but the use is permitted, which I think was a lot of the conversation that the board had, was there's mechanisms that we can rely on if there's structural non-conformities or site non-conformities. They just wanted to make sure that as far as the use goes, and that we were not making any one use non-conforming. Um, so that was the extent of what we did, um, putting these uses back in to the C five. Same with gas stations, um, so gas stations are now allowed, they just have some parameters around them. Yeah, so those-
Those two.
Those were, um, the most significant additions back in. Um, so also, um, they had asked that the approval mechanism in the C five be the same as it is in the C two. So, you know how originally we had said everything's special use? And they had said, um, if it's a permitted use in the C two, we'd like to see it a permitted use in the C five, so just make that consistent. So, we did that. Um, so that's now reflected in the adopted, um, table of permitted uses and activities. And with this, um, that was gonna be forty percent lot coverage, you can go to fifty with permeable paving. Um, they wanted to see more consistency with the C two, in the C two, you can be at fifty-five percent. So, we landed on forty-five- So we landed on forty-five percent impervious, and you can go to fifty-five percent if you use permeable materials, so you're still getting to the fifty-five. Um, it's just, your impervious is going to be capped at forty-five. And nothing changed with, um, the, the pet grooming. Here we have the changes that were made to fueling stations. Um, fueling station shall have no more than four dispensers. Um, fueling station with or without a convenience store associated with it, um, should not have frontage on twelve. And convenience stores associated with fueling station shall not exceed thirty-five hundred, um, square feet of habitable building area. And so there were some changes here as well, um, section seven point three two, where we talk about mixed uses. We wanted to make sure, um, so when you look at this section, there's a whole list of things that can be part of a mixed use development. But we wanted to make sure that when you went and looked in that district, if that use wasn't allowed in that district, that it wasn't going to be allowed as a mixed use development. Um, so, for instance, if, um, and I don't know if this would be true, I'm just gonna make something up, but, uh, let's say we allowed, um, indoor entertainment facilities in a mixed use development. But that mixed use development was going to be in the C five. So then you go to the C five and you see that indoor entertainment facilities aren't allowed. So even though it says that it's gonna be in a mixed use, it's not allowed in the district, it's not allowed as part of the center. So we just wanted to make sure that was clarified. It was, um, a little confusing before. So, uh, the special development standards, we also revised those. Um, the biggest thing here, um, is going to be that, uh, commercial structures that front twelve, that went from thirty-five hundred to forty-two hundred square feet of habitable area. And, uh, like I said at the board meeting, at the Board of Commissioners meeting, um, this was generated, um, for transparency out of Nagshead Cafe. Their restaurant is thirty-five, is less than thirty-five hundred square feet, but it's a two-story building with some residential on top. When you look at that in totality, commercial with accessory residential above, um, they were a little over four thousand. We didn't just wanna choose an arbitrary number. Forty-two hundred square feet of habitable area is the same amount of area that you can have in the Soundside Residential Overlay District, which is also another historical area of the town with, um, historical homes that we try to preserve. Um, nothing changed with the ten thousand on twelve, um, and nothing changed with how we, we view, um, dual frontages, except this bump to forty-two hundred. Uh, wanted to make sure that a use was only going to be considered, um, the board would only have to consider making those special findings a fact about it being architecturally, um, consistent with the old Nagshead look, um, if it were a special use that was going before the board. This was required to be changed, um, when we changed how different things were viewed, permitted or special use, so that's just clarifying. And, um, here's just the detailed information about the forty-five percent and the fifty-five percent. And I believe that, um, same here, bumped this to forty-five and fifty-five percent, um, lot coverage. And then we have these definitions for convenience store, fueling station, and grocery store. So those were the changes, um, that staff added after the March first meeting that were adopted at the March fifteenth meeting. So, which brings us to the conversation today, um, and that is about the map amendments to be associated with the text amendments. And, um, at the board's March first meeting, um, they did, um, again, appreciated all the work that went into it, understood, um, how and why staff and the planning board, um, came to the designations that we did, uh, but they did ask for staff to bring this back, to give planning board a second look at it. Um, and specifically, um, to give consideration to proposing a redesignation of this parcel, um, on Hollowell Street, um, at one oh one East Hollowell, to be re-designated from the originally proposed R three to the proposed C five. So, um, that would obviously open up the development opportunities for the property to have some limited commercial development there. Um, we did go ahead, so this is the version, this map is the version that the planning board recommended. Um, we've gone ahead and made, uh, this secondary map to show the Hollowell parcel as the C five, just so visually. Um, and then, on the map, you could see what that looks like. There's no other changes proposed on this map with the exception of Hollowell. Um, to speak to what Basil said earlier, there was conversation about, um, if you changed this to C five, does either, either this R three or this C five become spot zoning? And it's, we talked with the attorney, his opinion is that it does not rise to the level of spot zoning. Um, and so we're proceeding in the fashion that it doesn't either. Um, but if you look very closely, this actually is a continuation of the C five. Um, it's not completely closed off here. Uh, you have the C five here for the seven eleven. They do have a little bit of adjoining property here, um, to transition this C five. We're proposing, as Basil had requested, and numerous people have emailed us about, um, to keep this residential here on the west side of twelve, to keep that R three. It's consistent with what's been developed here. Um, there's, in staff's opinion, no need to change it. And, uh, it does offer a level of, um, buffering for them, just like we talked about, um, with the church, when you have commercial adjacent to residential. If this does become commercial, um, the buffer yard, it, it's going to, there will always be a ten-foot buffer yard here required, but if one of the higher intensity uses were to be proposed here, it's gonna trigger that high-impact buffer yard, which is actually twenty-five feet of buffer yard and three rows of planting. So it, it provides some protection here.
It's C two now.
Correct. All of it is C two.
Yeah, okay, and then what about these other, like, there's other neighborhoods that would be C five, or other houses that would be in C five? Is there some disadvantage to being a residential house in C five? Just curious.
No, the C five were single-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, all of the residential uses. There's, there's no disadvantage to a home being in the C five.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, they, there was a lot of concern expressed here as C two with, um, high-intensity, high-impact uses, um, being here and how that would affect these residential uses. Um, keeping this, well, to, to put it bluntly, if all of this were C five-
Right, that's what my question.
If, yeah, so if all of this were C five, um, this at best would be a ten-foot buffer-
Mm-hmm.
-when this got developed.
Okay.
But if this is R three, so it's not only developed residentially but zoned residentially, then that's gonna require that twenty-five-foot buffer yard-
Oh, okay.
-um, for a high-impact use.
Okay. But we're not offering that same protection to some of these other places?
But there already are.
I just wonder why we just picked that one little stretch to protect when there's other-
There's R three down by Nagshead Pizza too.
Right.
Yeah, so, so same, same here. Um, this isn't developed residentially, but it is a residential zone.
Mm-hmm.
If something were to occur here that these people came back before us for an expansion, um, we would look at an increased buffer yard here for them as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, same, same here. Anytime you have a, a commercial use abutting, a residential use, there's a minimum ten-foot buffer.
Okay.
But if it's a high-impact use, then the buffer increases.
So Matty Midget, what I call Matty Midgets, it's in, it's in an R three? The Beachcomber?
Yes, right here. It is, so, um, the Matty Midget Museum is attached to where Chaz and Dorothy live, their residential.
Yeah.
Um, I will, I will say this, um, oops.
Why did that get put in that, if it was commercial, I mean?
Yeah.
Like, it's always been a grocery store. It's my great-grandmother's grocery store. Like, what? Why?
The Matty Midget Museum?
Yes. Well, that used to be my grandmother's, my great-grandmother's grocery store, like, right there.
Yeah, so it's currently developed, the current use is residential.
Right.
Um, there's an owner-occupied art gallery, which I understand is no longer opening. I think they're trying to give their collection away.
Ah, okay.
So it's residential.
I'm just wondering why it ever got-
It's right there on the edge of the commercial, huh? Right.
I was just curious.
Just curious.
Yeah, I mean-
Okay.
I mean, that's why we're here, to have this second look. Um, one other thing that I did wanna mention, it was, um, stated at the Board of Commissioners' March fifteenth meeting, um, generally a desire to keep commercial, which in this case is gonna be your C five, along one fifty-eight, um, to the greatest extent possible. So, in these areas where we have residential, a re, a proposed R three along one fifty-eight, um, they're already developed residentially for the most part. Um, when you get up here, a lot of these property owners in here had requested, um, a lot of them have homes over here on the east side, had requested that their properties stay in a residential zoning district, you know, through here, so we wanted to honor that. Um, there is a property, I wanna say kind of in this location, it's kind of L-shaped, um, where a gentleman had concern about being designated R three, and he preferred the C five. Um, however, making this C five, um, was going to also require that these two residential properties here become C five as well. Um, and so we do have, uh, communication from the property owners of these lots. Um, I won't remember them all off the top of my head, but, um, Cecilia Winslow, uh, Margaret Bennett, there's a couple of other property owners. Uh, we did receive word from them that they would prefer their properties, um, to stay residentially zoned. So, uh, it's, we can have the conversation, staff's recommendation would be that, um, at this time, this stay R three as it's been proposed.
So you just have more people in there that want it residential, and then one guy, like, basically? West Nagshead Pizza that wants, that's what it comes down to?
It seems that, it seems that way, yes. We've heard from these property owners here. A lot of these property owners also own property on this side. Um, then there's this one piece here that I was telling you about, and then these property owners also prefer the R three. So, yeah, it's, it's kind of like you have a desire for one, one property in this area to be C five, whereas, um, the residential properties in the area have requested it R three.
What about down behind, like, Duck Through St. Andrews? Do those people want to be C five, or do they wanna be R three, or do they care, or?
Acquiescing one, I'm not-
Yeah, like, like, right behind Duck Through, next to St. Andrews, there's a row, little, there's a row of houses there, like, do they, have they commented, or do they have an opinion?
Through here?
Uh-huh.
Um, we have not heard from anyone in this area about being displeased, um, with their, with the proposed C five.
So, Sancho, what you're saying is this bottom portion reflects what people want, is reflect what the board wants?
Yes, so-
So, so this is what we're being asked to approve today, correct?
Yep. With, yes, with, with the caveat that I did want you to know, um, about the request being made here, um, for C five with all the adjoining properties requesting R three.
If there hadn't been any requests there, would that have just stayed C five?
This area?
Yeah, would, is that-
Likely-
-accommodate the request, or is that to, just because we think that would be better, R three?
Um, I think we came to this determination probably a couple different ways. So, these property owners who do own over here requested this, um, but, you know, these are, these property owners have an R one designation, um, already, so the most restrictive residential designation that there is, in an effort to, um, provide the level of protection for the historic character area. I think it was kind of a, a logical step to consider a residential designation on this side as well. Um, but as far as these properties here, that was driven by specific requests to have the properties on this side of one fifty-eight, R three.
Stay the R three.
With the exception of that one.
So that does affect the business that butts right up to that, so have you heard from that business, that, do they? Do they have an op, like, it, Nagshead Pizza is affected because now they have higher setbacks on two sides of their property. Have you heard from them about their opinion about being surrounded by R three and seven C five?
Sure, yeah, so I've spoken with Kevin Bancroft multiple times, and I've spoken with Malcolm Fearing, Malcolm Fearing's daughter, uh, I forget her first name, but I've talked with her twice as well, and they're, they understand that.
Are they affiliated with Nagshead Pizza?
Well, they own it.
So Malcolm Fearing owns the property.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I got you, okay, okay, okay. Just curious, 'cause it does affect them.
I guess, I just, when I look at it, I, I hate, I, not I hate, I don't wanna, I worry that, and the hindsight is gonna be, well, we acquiesced these property owners, but what if these guys didn't want it, but I guess if they didn't say anything, I just wanna make sure we're not saying yes to one and no to another, and being consistent.
Taking everybody into consideration.
Yeah, I, I worry if there's another property that says, well, I would have loved to protect my view of the sunsets as well and kept that all, but we went C five with it, so I worry picking and choosing because these five wanted that. Um, I understand what they're saying, I just-
Right.
-wanna be consistent and make sure that we're not-
Well, to my knowledge, I mean, I, I think we've, we've tried to articulate when we've received information from property owners, they do or don't like it, or what they had preferred or not preferred. Um, this area preferred to stay residential, um, with the exception of this one property.
What's gonna happen with that one?
Yeah, I just, I was too bad.
So the exception of that one property, you know, the people wanna change the zone for that.
Where's this?
Uh, we do, are we gonna do that?
'Cause the Hollowell property would have preferred it to stay C, I, I just, I don't, it, yeah, I'd like to be consistent.
So it was, as far as the Hollowell property, um, just, 'cause I heard that mentioned, so obviously the property owner was at the meeting. Um, he requested C five. Yes, I think he would have preferred C two. Um, but he did, in, in light of the proposal, request C five and seemed comfortable with C five. Um, I regret that Basil has left. Um, I spoke with several of these property owners that were comfortable with- Um, I spoke with several of these property owners that were comfortable with this changing to C five. I think you heard from Basil this morning, um, kind of speaking on behalf of this area, support of the C five um, for this, so, um, I don't, I'm not aware of any conflict with the C five, R three. Nothing has been expressed to me with that, um.
I just, if I lived, if I had one of these properties that is across from C five, and then I saw that this happened here, I would say, well, I would have loved to have had my sunset protected and not had.
Or, you would want your property to be worth more.
Yeah, that, that too, and, well, and at the board meeting.
Yeah, depends on what your goals are.
Yeah.
Um, Mayor Cahoon brought up, you know, like, what, I think it was Mayor Cahoon, I apologize for my stuff, but I, I remember him saying, like, where else can a gas station go? Where else, so, to take out a chunk of bypass frontage when we've already changed this to C five and put, I, I feel like we're kind of nicking, you know, take another piece away of something that we've already changed, so, I worry.
So, I may misunderstand, but, so, a gas station can still go in any of these C five areas.
But not in the R three.
Correct, not in the R three, and, and just, uh, I'm happy that Mr. Griffin, who's a property owner in this area, is here. I'm relatively confident that the property owners of these properties here and here would not want commercial or a gas station to the extent that many of them have deed restrictions on their property, that it can only be developed residentially.
Even if it was C five?
Correct.
So.
So why would you?
Then, why, I'm not, then, I'm being argumentative, but, why, why rezone it to R three then, if they have deeded restriction? Why not just be consistent and do C five then? And if they weren't happy with that, then they could do a deeded restriction.
Uh, I mean, this, 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 no, it's kind of been discussed, I won't beat a dead horse, obviously, but you have, you have property owners that live here, who have this property and property here. And, you know, receiving letters from them requesting that their property be maintained in a, in an R one or an R three designation. That's, that's why it was proposed in that manner.
Hey Kelly, can you show the, the lot lines on, in that R three area? I mean, I, I'm just curious about how many lots we're talking about, do we, I mean, I see it for some of the C five, but not for the R three.
Let, let me pull up Dare County G I S for you real quick.
Well, I just, I was wondering about, you know, wondering about the lots.
Right. A lot of them are small, aren't they, Gary?
Well, BB Young's one of them, by the way.
I know.
So, let me, let's let staff respond, and then we'll see if there's a, um, need, or, you know, we'll see if we can get the questions answered this way. Please.
You can now see the lot lines at least in here. Actually, I wonder if. So, does this help, Gary?
Yes, I mean, I was just, I was looking particularly at the sizes of the lots, because I was, you know, worried, not worried, but thinking about, you know, okay, how, can we put these monster houses, you know, these big houses right across the street from, you know, it, it depends on the size of the lot, right?
It does, so, most of these lots in this area, um, are fifteen thousand square feet. So that's not going to allow a large residential development.
Okay, okay.
Um, if they have sixteen thousand square feet or greater, they can build a large, single-family dwelling.
Or if they combine.
Right, or if they could combine.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else have questions, or? For Kelly? Okay, thanks Kelly, so we have the map amend, the map before us again for, um, today, and an action item. Any, just, any more discussion, I'm hearing?
I'm gonna kick this off, um, I, and I'm going, like, I'm just gonna kind of dig my heels in here, but I, I just want to be consistent, um, after the meeting in January and hearing, being at the March first meeting, and hearing the public comment, and having time to reflect, I really want to be equal and consistent, and I, one of the public comments, you know, with the special use permit was, a lot of the business owners felt like they weren't being treated equal. And I understood that, and after I reflected on it and looked at it and heard a lot of the public comment, and I worry that if I say yes on this, that I'm going to have that same feeling afterwards, and I'd want to be consistent with the C five, and I don't. I, I, I have a hard time being okay with picking, cherry picking a certain area and saying, okay, we'll keep that, 'cause these guys want that there, but these guys haven't said anything, but then what happens when they come back and say, well, wait a minute, after they see what's going on, um?
This will have to go to a public hearing again, Kelly?
It does, it.
In May, right?
Yes, so it's gonna go to a public hearing, once we do consent agenda in April, the four hundred and fifty letters will go back out, the thirty signs will be posted. Um, and everybody will have that opportunity again. I guess one thing that I failed to mention is any property owner within the town of Nyxhead can submit a request to rezone their property, or others' property, it's just a different scenario, you know, it's a different process, so, if down the road someone wants to rezone, they're, they can apply with the town to do that. But yes, uh, public hearing, consent agenda in April, and public hearing at board's main meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
I mean, I do have similar concerns as Megan, I mean, it's just, it seems so random in that little one section.
Yep.
Um.
Right in here.
Yeah, it just, it just seems picking and choosing, but.
Okay.
I mean, I would want to pick mine too, if it was my property, I'd want to have a say. And I'm glad that they got to have a say, and that somebody listened to them, but at the same time, it just seems, like, some people are, don't have a say, or haven't had a say yet, and we're picking for them. That seems weird.
But if they have an opportunity to come back and have a say, like in April, and
Yeah.
then this may change again.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm hearing s- one, two, three reservations, Gary, you're pretty quiet.
No, I'm, I'm good with this, this is a, this is a good map, I mean, I'm, I like what staff has done.
I'm, I'm fine with this too personally.
Yeah, I like it.
I'm fine with this, so, um, does, do we want to? I think we've about covered it, does anybody want to make a motion, or? And then we can call a vote?
If we make a motion, can we vote yes, and then say, but we still have concerns about the consistency?
You can, but it won't make any difference.
I don't know.
I mean, yeah, comes a time, we just have to vote. Right?
Well, because it's coming to a public hearing again, and people get to have a say, I'm gonna vote for yes for this.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm that way too.
Okay, so anyway, let's.
You have an opportunity.
Yeah, okay.
We have an opportunity to go to that and listen to it, in that way, if it comes back, we can.
Mm-hmm, yes, Kelly.
I just want to clarify, what you're voting yes to is, um, the second map that you have, which has this as C five, just this, this as R three.
R three.
Right.
And then the remainder of the map, um, consistent with what, um, the planning board recommended approval of back in January.
Okay, correct.
None of this has changed.
Right, right. Right.
Okay, this would be the only deviation, so I just want to make sure.
Right.
Right.
And we're set on that.
Um, if this is what you recommend approval of.
We are, we are, you agreed to this.
Yeah, that's true.
That was before, you know, okay, so anyway, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, you make a motion to approve this map we just talked about, we all know what it is, okay?
Yes.
I'll second.
And a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good, move on to, um, tech, uh, consideration of a text amendment to the U D O as it pertains to the town's short-term rental registration rules.
This one's gonna be pretty quick, you probably remember, um, here a couple months ago, talking about the, um, court case down in Wilmington, um, where we had a lot of information come out on what you can and cannot do in terms of short-term rentals, Schroder versus City of Wilmington. So at that time, we were advised by the town attorney that, um, our registration for short-term rentals, um, was likely not valid, and we needed to, um, eliminate that. It doesn't preclude us from considering some other type of regulation of short-term rentals, but for the time being, we should not be doing the registration, and as long as we have this in our code, um, people are going to continue to send in their application and their money, so. This is pretty straightforward, it's just to, um, remove the language regarding, uh, the registration for short-term rentals, uh, as well as the parking standard for short-term rentals. Um, if we're, if we're not regulating them, then there's likely not a separate parking requirement related for them. Uh, I am proposing leaving in the definitions, there's no harm in leaving the definition of partial and whole home. But as far as the parts of the ordinance that actually, um, speak to the regulation and registration, proposing that we eliminate those.
Okay, anybody have questions for Kelly about that? Okay, thank you, Kelly. Anybody have comments, let's just before us to eliminate the registration rules.
Right.
I think it makes sense.
Yeah.
I personally hope we will continue to pursue, um, I thought the, um, section from the link to the blog from the School of Government was really interesting.
Yes.
And, um, there are other things we can do that I hope we will pursue, but obviously, this kind of has to be done, I, I said, I think this has to be done.
I think there's, I think there's a desire from both boards to, to continue to try to find a way to regulate.
Mm-hmm, so.
Need a motion?
Yeah, unless anybody, anybody have anything they want to say about it, sure, I'll take, love a motion.
Okay, move.
We have a motion to eliminate the, um, short-term rental registration rules.
Right.
One second.
And a second, any further discussion, any discussion?
What, I'm just curious, where, where, what's gonna replace this, I mean, is there, I mean, is there, is there a proposal, I mean, have you got, I'm sure you, the attorneys have been thinking about ways to kind of circumvent this ruling, but I'm just wondering what, 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 what we're gonna be looking at down the road for a replacement?
So, we're gonna have to start that process, there's, you can regulate short-term rentals via, we could create a zoning permit for a short-term rental, there's ways to do it.
Okay, I'll just.
Yeah, we're just not there yet, but it's, it's in the works.
So the people that have already paid those registration fees in the past and sent them in, what happens with that?
It's an annual thing, so. Do they just stop?
So they just?
Yeah, you would no longer, at this point, you no longer need to do that.
Well, I mean, it was like twenty-five bucks a year.
No, it was like.
Is that what it is, what is?
It was like twenty-five dollars, wasn't it?
Was it a hundred?
Uh, was it fifty?
Fifty, anyway. So it'll happen immediately, you just stop accepting and tell people it's not a program in place anymore. I mean, not immediately today, but once the board.
Yes, and in all honesty, as soon as, it's probably been months back, um, we've, when people call and say, I'm sending it in, I want to pay my registration fee, we tell them no.
I don't think there's been so much compliance.
The two people that called, two people that are staying.
Okay, so, um, wait, I'm gonna have to try, we have a motion and a second, we were discussing.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Great, moving on, then to a report on the B O C actions from March first and fifteenth, we've covered some of this, a little bit of this.
We have, and I won't go into great detail on anything, um, but at our March first meeting, Paige Griffin did give a really wonderful presentation um, to the board on the Arts and Culture Committee, and the past season, and what they're hoping for coming up. Obviously, we've talked enough about this one, uh, the historic character area in C five. What else? Um, so, the Dune Management, the cost share program, that's been incredibly successful, um, Kate Jones and Kelly Brady kind of had that up, and, um, we run out of money, and the board gives us more, and we run out of money, and the board gives us more, um, so, it is, it's, it's been very good. So, just recently, we were awarded some more money to continue this project, so that's ongoing. There were, uh, some amendments that were proposed to the Beach Concierge, um, ordinance, I don't know how many people are familiar with that, um, but essentially, it just regulates when these, uh, beach concierge vendors can get out there in the morning, start putting up tents, umbrellas, um, the rules they have to follow in terms of signage, identification, and when they have to pull it off the beach. So, the biggest change in those rules were, um, they're allowed to get out there an hour earlier in the morning, um, and they can be out there an hour later in the evening to coincide with, um, is it seven to eight, is that the seven AM? Six AM.
Six AM.
To set up.
To set up.
Speak out there. Spot on the public beach.
But, um, at, at least, uh, the thought behind that was, um, then they can get out there and not have their vehicles in the beach access competing for people trying to get out there.
Kelly, let me ask you a question about this, and I, 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 I hate to bug this, I, this is, this, but this troubles me a bit, and that is signage relative to, you know, these concierge going up there, I mean, with, with the umbrellas that are, I don't know if anybody else has the same kind of an issue with this, but I am very much opposed to, you know, signs, you know, just, especially on our public beach, you know what I mean?
What do you mean a sign, like, on their?
Well, I mean, signs.
They identify all their stuff, so it's like advertising on the beach, you know?
Telephone numbers, I mean, I, I don't know, I just.
Website.
How, how many Budweiser signs are, are on the beach?
Exactly, I mean, they're all on the beach, on the beach, however.
But you mean people, individuals bringing flags and stuff?
I see it all the time.
Right, but that's different from commercial enterprises putting advertisements on the beach.
On your, like, your beach chair, or your?
Umbrellas.
Talking about people that do rentals, like, they're renting out chairs and umbrellas and put them out for people.
Yes, people, right, they're renting, right, right, right. And they put their, their sign with their telephone, all that stuff, I, I don't know, I'm, maybe I'm, maybe I'm off base on this, but.
I don't think we're.
The, the better, like, the double-edged sword to that, though, is before, like, when this all first started, and it was just random, like, they didn't have all the signs on it, it was probably hard for people to track them down afterwards, like, when they end up in the water and stuff, so, it is kind of nice to know that's a vacationer's tent, or beach service, but usually the beach services are picking them up.
Another way to identify them, other than giant.
Yeah, 'cause otherwise you have no clue who they are.
On all foursized, name of the company, and the website address, and the telephone number, I mean, we don't allow, um, you know, you see that sometimes too, where rental companies will try to put stuff on their stairs and on the, you know, I mean, we don't want the beach to be commercialized, you know, but. At any rate, this, thank you for the report, Kelly, it's not really our thing, but.
Um, Gary, I will send this to you, um, signage for these vendors is pretty limited. So I will, I'll send that ordinance to you, so you.
What do you mean, can review it?
It's supposed to have, like, you have a control on what, how big it can be.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so when it comes to, like, Farm Dog and Ocean Atlantic, and those people, the signage on there is very limited. So, but I'll make sure that, I'll send it to everybody, actually, it'll be nice.
I don't like the extension of hours either, but it's not our call, so.
Well, I mean, it's like, the beach is being reserved.
There's no time, you can go to the beach now. Yeah, the beach is being reserved, and, and there's no time, then you can go out, you know, they.
So by the time you get out there.
The parking lots aren't full at seven o'clock in the morning, but anyway, it's been just, it's been decided, so.
Um, we do have now an M O U with the town of Kill Double Hills for building inspection services. Um, we do have now an MOU with the Town of Kill Devil Hills for building inspection services. I'm sure everybody knows our chief building inspector, Steve Samansky, he's our only inspector at the moment. And it's, uh, been very, very busy, I will say. So, um, he's, he's working mornings, nights, weekends to make that happen. So it's good that we have this MOU in case we need to get some help for him. And wanted to update. Kate Jones, um, attended a, um, can maybe talk about it as well. You wanna do that when you get up here?
Yeah.
Next, okay. Kate can give more info on her grant meeting, um, when she gets up here to talk about EV in just a minute. So... That's all I have for the first, and I'm not even gonna pull the fifteenth up because I just gave you the whole spiel on that.
Okay. Great, thank you. And, um... Town updates as requested. You know, haven't heard from anybody. Kelly, you might as well, your, your, um, your report, your director's report. Please.
I'm honestly not sure that there's much to go on.
Anything else then?
Um, to be honest, I mean, you're aware of what's been going on here. There's updates in here. If anyone has any specific questions about, um, these items, we'll go back. You know, we've talked about a lot of these in previous meetings. Um, but what I wanted to focus on, um, is actually our next item, which is an update on EV. So, um, if you're...
And Kate's gonna do that for us?
Yes, she is.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Kate. Good morning, planning board. I don't have anything for you to look at, but you've looked at enough this morning, so we'll just chat. Wanted to give you guys an update on the EV charger. We, um, applied for a grant, um, with the state. And if any of you know, the state, all the states in the, um, in the country received money from the VW settlement. So, um, it's kinda federal money piped through the state. But we did apply for, um, funding for a, um, two-port public level-two charger here at Town Hall. And, um, the maximum amount you can receive per port is five thousand dollars. So if we received the grant, we'll receive ten thousand dollars. We did, um, I did talk with, um, ChargePoint, who's a, a vendor manufacturer of, of, a very reputable one for charging infrastructure. And, um, we've received a quote for sixteen thousand dollars. And so, the remaining, uh, um, balance is in, currently an item in our CIP. So if you look into the town's proposed budget for next year, you'll see this item in there. But in the meantime, we were also, uh, made aware of another grant. Um, this is a federal grant called Charging and Fueling Infrastructure Discretionary Grant Program. So this may be another pot of money where we can actually apply to cover that balance. And, you know, with the rising costs, but by the time we actually go to install this, it may be more. So, um, I think what we'll do is submit an application for this other pot of funding to make up the difference. And then there's also, um, the opportunity to sink in with the Public Works complex because there's some EV charging proposed there. And there may be an opportunity to, um, this other grant to also get some money to kind of pull that out and fund that. That would be more money available. Those, from what I understand, those chargers will not be publicly available. They will be for the town. And, um, you know, maybe future, um, fleet vehicles or something like that. But the one here is publicly available, so anyone can use it when they sign up for a, an account. And, um, some of the logistics will, will need to get some guidance, probably come back to you for if we do receive the grant. That being, um, so with public, um, publicly accessible charging infrastructure, what a lot of communities do is they'll actually set up a rate so, um, you can make back some of that money. Obviously, our electricity bill will increase. So you can set a rate, um, for customers, so you're actually making that money back that you put into it. So, um, if we choose to do that, um, it, it, you know, it'd be something that would come back to you. We can talk about that, how it works. But the good thing is, is all of this is set up through ChargePoint. They, they really install, it's a cloud-based system. They install the software. They have their, um, you know, basically all their apps and their, their online system that we would use. And then we would also purchase a, um, uh, not only a warranty, but it's a five-year maintenance program. So every five years, you pay a fee, which is covered in this initial amount. They do, they perform all the warranty, uh, all, any maintenance, anything that breaks down, they'll come fix, or any parts that need replacing. They basically take on all the maintenance. So I think that's a good option for us. We don't wanna add that to our, our facilities team here. So anyway, um, that is the update, so we're moving forward. The grant, the, at least the first one, the VW settlement grant that we have applied for closes March thirty-first. So we should, um, you know, those will close and then we should, um, hear something, you know, hopefully, you know, sometime in April or May. So that's hopefully the way that will work. And it is first come, first served basis.
Does this be something that would be installed in, in twenty-four?
Uh, for, yes, twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, we'd have the funds available, so our, you know, our, our new budget would, would begin in July. And if we receive the money, we could even install it potentially this calendar year if, if all goes well.
That'd be good.
Yeah, it's time.
Start.
Yeah.
Yep.
But we can come, yes, Gary.
Just a question. You, you mentioned something about having an account. If we, I'm talking about the public, uh, EV station, I think. And I'm just wondering, you, you mentioned something about having an account. If, once you have your account, I'm just wondering, I mean, how, how is this operational? I mean, I, I don't know anything about them. I don't know...
Yeah, it's a good question.
But I, I don't know what the account means. That's why, I was just curious because, you know...
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. So, um, the company ChargePoint, um, not only manufactures the actual equipment, but they have a system for, um, payments and actually even locating. So if you, if you download their app or you go online to ChargePoint, they have a, um, an interactive map that shows you where all the chargers are near you. So we would be a part of that system. Our charger would show up as something that's publicly available. And then, um, so we'd be locatable. But then it also, um, has software that, you know, takes payments and, and does all that for you. But however you can set, you have the control to set your payment. So, we could, you know, we could look at our utility bills and say, okay, here's what we're paying per kilowatt hour this time of year. We've, you know, we suspect, what do we wanna set that at? We would, you know, and that would probably be something we'd come back to you guys and get some guidance on. Yeah, it, it was interesting to learn about it.
Yes.
Okay.
Would this, would this, um, if this happens, would, would this public charging station then, um, be considered as a, a primary, um, point of protection in the event of a power outage? Would this be on the microgrid?
Well, we have, I'm glad you asked that. So we've been looking at, uh, the potential microgrid for this area. Um, as you might remember, when we talked about, I updated you guys, um, there was a lot we talked about. But, yes, this area could be, um, identified. It is identified as, as a good place for a microgrid. And, but even stepping back from that, we did put another item in the CIP, which doesn't go as far as, as the whole microgrid. That obviously could, requires a lot more buy-in from, from other people in this area. But we did put an item in there for solar at Town Hall. So, um, during, um, an outage, we could potentially hook this system up to the solar system and there would be some connectivity there to provide power during a grid outage. So we did think about that. And while it's not, per se, um, you know, a microgrid, we're kinda working towards that as best we can. Cause, um, yeah.
Well, this, my thought was that if, if the Town Hall complex would be protected by the microgrid...
Right.
And this is gonna be on the, on that property, would all...
It all sinks in together, yes. So, um, and while we aren't looking at, um, storing at this point, um, that could be something, like, the, the proposal for solar panels does not include storage at Town Hall right now because it, it is prohibitively expensive. But if those costs continue to come down in the future, we could add storage, which would also help, you know, during that system, but, but...
Before you do storage, you could also kick it back on to the grid and sell it back to the grid.
That's right. That's right. We can kick it back on to the grid and sell it back.
And get, and get points, get credits.
Yes, and that, that was part of the analysis that the team did, was they did a, that re-op analysis that looked at the cost effectiveness of solar here, uh, was significant. And that eventually, we could be saving eighty to ninety thousand dollars, um, on electric bills, which is significant. And that was the most dramatic finding of this whole process, is why we, we, the board agreed, yes, let's move forward. But this, the, the solar panels would also be grant-funded, I wanted to add. So, um, we, we need to, um, locate some funding for that, but I think we'll be successful.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks for tying that in. That was good.
Yeah.
Um, so, I did attend the, um, North Carolina Resilient Communities Funding Forum a couple of weeks ago. Um, and what that was, was a program put on from a few state agencies, like Department of Public Safety, the Department of Coastal Management. There were a lot of state agencies that put this on, and the purpose was to bring together communities and explain all the funding that's available out there. So there is, the, the, again, the audience is primarily local governments. So there were a lot of local governments from eastern North Carolina. And there were federal and state people there explaining all the money they had to give away. Um, and it really was eye-opening. I mean, we, we've known this. And, you know, we have a grant team working on identifying grants for us. And I'm so glad we do because there's so much out there. And it's, it's, it's not easy to constantly keep track of what's available and then, you know, successfully write the grants. But it was really informative. I'm trying to think, the main takeaways were not, we're, we're actually doing a great job. So, you know, there's a lot of communities out there that actually need a lot of help. And we're really in a lucky position that we, that we're able to have help. But that we've also, we had already secured some of the grants that they were talking about, like the North Carolina Coastal, um, Resilient Coastal Communities Program, you know, we're, we're in that. Um, we just secured a Lassie Stormwater Grant, so they talked about that a bit. I did talk to, um, the, the funder of our estuarine shoreline management plan, then National Fish and Wildlife Foundation's having another grant, um, cycle. So I was able to talk to them about funding the next steps in the estuarine shoreline plan, so that was great. And then, um, there were a few state, um, DEQ people there talking about money that they had. There might be some tie-in with some of our septic health, um, initiative. You know, the outcomes from the decentralized plan, so there could be some interesting tie-ins with that. We could look for funding for advancing some of the programs of that septic health initiative. And then, the big ones, like the Building Resilient Infrastructure Brick, that's a federal one. It was interesting to hear about some of the community's experience with these big federal grants and how cumbersome some of them can be. And, um, you know, in some cases, it is a roadblock for some communities that just, just really don't have the staff to put towards this. So I hope that, um, I think that the state and federal partners heard a lot of these concerns and hopefully they'll work to make some of these, um, programs a little easier for some communities. But I think we're doing a pretty good job of going after a lot of this stuff and, and we plan to keep, keep pushing, cause this is really, I think everyone kept saying it's like a once-in-a-lifetime.
Right.
Yeah, all the money out there, so I'm gonna try to keep track of it.
Credit while you can.
Anyway.
Nags Head did a good job.
Well, thank you, Kate. I know it's a ton of work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, whenever you read in the newspaper about grants locally, it's always Nags Head.
Yeah, I think we, we were the only community that went from, that I, I don't, I mean, which was surprising. I was hoping maybe some more of the beach communities would go, but we're the only community out here that, that really went.
Wow.
Good. Yeah, I mean, free money, free money. More money for us. Well, thank you, Kate.
You're welcome.
I know it's a lot of work, keeping track.
Yes, appreciate it.
I heard you say you have a, like, a grant team. What did you refer to it?
Yeah, so I guess, yeah, I could have elaborated on that. We, we do have, um, uh, we put out an RF, I guess it would've been a Q, RFQ of last year, for consultants to help us identify funding and in some cases, help us write the grants. So, we've had, um, actually, um, two of Jessica and Dawn, who are on our estuarine shoreline consultant team. They are on this team with a consultant, uh, Hunter Freeman from McAdams out of Raleigh. So, they're, um, the three of them together help us on a contractual basis, identify grants. So if you look at what we've spent relative to them, and then, you know, we just received a couple million dollars for stormwater. You know, we've received the RC CP Phase Three.
You know, that's money well spent.
It's, it's money well spent, cause we're actually getting...
Good return on your asking.
So the, we're very thankful that...
Right, yeah, I mean, you can't, you can't do, you can't be expected to do all that and be doing, you know?
No, cause, uh, I mean, I feel like, you know, the, the priority, when someone calls me and wants me to come up to a site, like, that's always...
Right.
I'm always gonna do that first.
Right.
So, yeah, it's, it's good that we're able to have the help.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty, so we have, um, a continued discussion of potential text amendments related to the definition of dwelling unit.
Hi, Kelly, again. Hey, um, so yeah, I guess I opened up Pandora's Box a little bit last month on this. And probably, uh, I'm here today to just say I've gotta reel it back in potentially? No, so, you know, we talked about, we had the, the presentation on definitions of dwelling, dwelling unit, single-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, housekeeping unit, family, uh, accessory uses, accessory structures, all those different things. Um, and kind of how they are working or not working together for maybe the best outcome. So, A- Andy had brought this up to me and I had forgotten about it. But here soon, we are gonna be doing a, uh, community-wide survey, um, within the town to just gain insight into what are we doing well, what are we not doing well, what do you wanna see more of, what are the issues? Um, and it, it's customizable, so it gives, you know, each department an opportunity to put a handful of questions in there to get responses back, to help guide us in how we form our next steps. So, um, it probably is best, as we're talking about, um, duplexes, ground-floor enclosures, short-term rentals, accessory dwellings, to have more input from the community on how they think it's going now, where they see it going and what they want, um, long-term. So, but for now, I think we did identify just some concerns with the definitions that we may need to look into. And so I'm not asking for, uh, recommendation on anything today. I just wanted to bring it to you. So, housekeeping unit was one of those things where we have the definition in our code and it, it could really be beneficial in terms of determining two-family and duplex versus short-term rental and ADU. So I just wanted to make sure that we, um, at least had a chance to look at these things, to say that a single-family dwelling would mean a dwelling containing one dwelling unit, designed or occupied exclusively by one family or one housekeeping unit. Same for two-family. For dwelling unit means, uh, a single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including, I eliminate, I'm proposing that we eliminate permanent, um, provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, food preparation and sanitation. This goes back to the conversation that we were having. You don't have to have a two-twenty for a stove to have a livable area. You can have a microwave, a hot plate, an air fryer, and you're good to go. And none of those things are permanent things. You can unplug them all and walk away. So, um, just kinda wanted to get people thinking about that. And, uh, accessory use, uh, I just proposed, and I forgot to underline it, but maybe just think about proposing a seventh item here that says, um, "An accessory use, in addition to all these other things, it is not an accessory dwelling unit and it's only for the use of the members of the housekeeping unit occupying the principal." Just wanted to have this in your packet. We can certainly have discussion today, but again... but again, I just wanted you to kind of think about it. And in terms of the bigger picture, it's, it's definitely an onion with lots of layers that gets a little more difficult the closer you get to the core. So, I think it's probably best if we do plan on getting citizen feedback through that community survey before we, we jump on those bigger issues. But for now, we could, we could consider just tidying up our definitions a little bit. So, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise.
Otherwise, that's all.
Kind of.
If you have questions for the time being.
Yeah, I think the bigger conversations are.
It's very hard to enforce, obviously, and that's the problem. Enforcement's always the key. And once there's an accessory structure, then it can become an accessory, accessory dwelling.
And perhaps we, you know, at the end of the day, perhaps we do want ADUs. But let's, you know.
Talk about it.
Let's talk about it, get community input before we start drafting things.
Right, right.
Does anybody have questions for Kelly on what she's put before us this morning? Okay, thank you, Kelly. That's good.
You're welcome.
We'll be thinking about it.
Think on it.
Think on it. We, we can do that. Okay, so that's the end of that item three, dwelling and use discussion. So, now we have planning board members' agenda. Anybody, anything? I didn't hear from anybody, okay. And last would be my agenda, and I have nothing today, so by Andy. So, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, great. We are adjourned.